So I will call to order the April 5th, 2021 meeting of the Hingham School Committee at 6:01 PM. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform all other participants of said recording. So I know Harbor Media is recording tonight as anyone else were planning to record this meeting. If you're on the panel, if you could just let me know, and if you're an attendee, if you could use the raise hand function, that would be great. Okay, seeing none. I would also just like to mention that I am participating in this meeting remotely, as are my colleagues Jen Benham, Ness Corenti, Carlos De Silva, Libby Luicki, and Liza O'Reilly. So with that being said, I'll take a motion to enter executive session.
I will make a motion to move to, wait a minute, let me look it up. To convene, to reconvene, to move to executive session, to reconvene an open session for the purposes of approving minutes from the executive session of, oh gosh, I'm screwing this up, hold on a second, sorry. Approving minutes of the executive session held on March 22nd, 2021, and to discuss a memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Education Association, Unit A, the public discussion of which will be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
Second.
Thank you. And for anyone who's watching this either right now or when it's recorded, what we're doing is we are going to executive session, which is a closed session, and we will reconvene at 7:00 PM. So you can feel free to join us then, it'll be the same link. So we have a motion and a second, so I will take votes. Let's see, Michelle, so Liza made a motion and Carlos seconded going into executive session, so.
Aye.
Thanks.
Aye.
Ness? Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So we will see everyone back here at 7:00 PM. Good evening, everyone. We are reconvening the April 5th, 2021 meeting of the Hingham School Committee. We called order at 6:00 and a few more people have joined us since then, so I'm just going to read the chair comment. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain visions of open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform all other participants of said recordings. So Harbor Media is recording us tonight. If anyone else is planning to record, if you could just use the raise hand function, please, and let us know. Okay, seeing none. We have a number of minutes to approve, so hopefully we can work through those quickly. The first is, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on March 17th, 2021, which was a joint meeting with ACES.
I move that we approve the joint meeting with ACES of the school committee meeting held on March 17th, 2021.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Thanks Ness. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go alphabetically, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness Corenti?
Aye.
Crossed this off.
Aye.
Libby Luicki?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Next, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on March 22nd, 2021, which was also a joint meeting with ACES.
I move that we approve the minutes of the joint meeting with ACES held on March 22nd, 2021.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Michelle? Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby? Libby, you're muted.
Sorry.
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Minutes are approved. Next, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on March 22nd, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you Ness. Any discussion? Okay, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness? Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Next, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on March 23rd, 2021, which is the Community Outreach Subcommittee.
Carrie, was this meeting held with the full school committee?
Well, I don't know, I wasn't, I didn't attend. Was there a quorum, Libby?
I don't think I did either, so.
I'm sorry, remind me which one we're talking about right now?
March 23rd with the Community Outreach Subcommittee. I think it was one of the coffees.
Oh, no, there was no quorum. We had set it up just in case.
Okay, so we don't need to approve, we can just have community outreach, then do these minutes.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Next is a minute to approve, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on March 23rd, 2021, which was a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Finally, we have, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on March 25th, 2021, which was a joint meeting with the Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, next on our agenda, we have questions and comments from the public. The St. Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments and questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please raise your hands, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the responsibility of the school committee. As established by Massachusetts General Laws, the responsibilities of the school committee are to: One, select and evaluate the superintendent; Two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and Three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response by comments, to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So with that being said, if anyone would like to speak, if you could just use the raise hand function. Okay, seeing none. We will move on to item 6.1, which is the Superintendent's Report, the COVID-19 Update. Dr. Austin?
Good evening and thank you, everyone. Nice to see you all again. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, as I do every, every week, and so we'll get right into that. Go ahead and move that forward. Thank you very much. So as always, we update you every, every school committee meeting with the town data. And you can see that since February 25th, the town data is hovering right around 24 cases per 100,000. That averages about six per week, actually. I think that's what that is, but you'd have to multiply it out additionally, but per 100,000. But anyway, the, so we see a 24.4 per 100,000 rate. And then the underneath that is the test positive rate, which has just had a slight increase this last week, which is pretty much in line with much to Commonwealth with a slight increase of 2.74%, but still in the yellow zone. As you can see, I think it's been the last 10 weeks that Hingham has stayed in the yellow zone and very, very consistent, particularly over the last six weeks. This is our Hingham School data. On top, you see the purple line is the total number of cases that we've had throughout the year. The blue is students only, and the red is staff only. So overall, we've now, last week, we had seven new cases. The week before, we had, since we haven't met for two weeks, the week before, we had 16 new cases. Last week, we had seven. So we've had a dip in the cases, which you see on the charts below you. All of them being, all seven last week, being student cases. And from 199 to 206 overall, and the staff cases stayed at 53. Were no cases at all last week, but overall, we've had 53 staff cases since the beginning of the school year. The bottom chart is just a graph on the number of total positive tests this week. And as you can see, the 321 to 327, we had 16 cases. That has now dipped down to below seven, which is one of the lower numbers we've had over the last several weeks. So that's good news overall in the town, and we hope it continues. So this is our quarantine report, also substantially lower than it was over the last three weeks. We are now into the, it's about 65 students overall. And I will, you know, continue to caution people, you know, now that we're in five days a week for all of our students. And, and I should have said that at the beginning, today's an important day. It was the first time that all of our students have been in school at one time for over, just about 13 months. So it's a very, very special day. Congratulations to all the people who worked very, very hard to get there, and it's finally arrived. And I'll caution people now that we are five days a week. We need to watch these numbers of quarantine very closely, but it's good news that it has continued to drop over the last three weeks. So again, the very good news, we continue with our PCR tests with our staff. We test just about, on average, about 100 per week, a little bit lower than that last week. And I would anticipate that is probably because so many people have been vaccinated now. So, but I would encourage people to still test. This is important. But right now, we have run a total of 1,706 staff tests since we started way back in January. We have a 99.94% negative testing rate. So we've had one out of 1,706 samples come back as positive way back in January for a 0.06% overall test positive rate for staff. And as we've talked about before, we've increased the number of students that are involved in the pool testing. And we are increasing, as you can see, day by day, how many students we have. I am going to continually plead for this, and I will later, that the more we can get to test, the better off we're going to be to, to monitor COVID in our schools. But so far, we've run 172 pools that involved 1,211 samples. We have a 100% negative test result, so we are testing positive at 0%. So very good news for pool testing and for being able to, to monitor COVID in the students. So some data, this is the test positive, or I'm sorry, total weekly positive count. As you can see, this is over the year. We ran a little different graph than we've done before. But you could certainly see in November, we started to go up after the Thanksgiving holiday. We went down again once we came back in, and then once again, after the winter break, which is our peak on January 9th, all the way up to 37 new cases that week. And since that time, we've continued to come down, well, and fluctuate a little bit. But to the point now, this last week, we were at seven. So our overall average has been 9.3 per week, when you add them all up across the district since 9/26. We have an average of 9.3, and again, this last week was just below that of seven, so a positive number for us. Now with the staff too. We, this is the staff testing, and again, very similar to the students. We saw an increase after the Thanksgiving holiday, where we had four and five cases the last week of November into the first week of January, back down again until just about when we went out for the, the winter break. Back up again for that first weekend, our first two weeks in January, back down again. And then after the February, or right around the February break in that area, we ended up with the highest number. But since that time, we've continued to drop. I would hope that that is data that we're seeing as people become vaccinated, that the numbers of staff infections are also coming down. So out of the last four weeks, we've had, three out of the four weeks, we've had no staff infections overall. We have an average of 1.9 throughout the year. But the last five, six weeks is certainly bringing that number down. So that's very good news for us as we look for infections with staff. So I want to talk a little bit about just some testing and data report. So as we continue to transition to full-time attendance, I'm encouraging participation for all students, particularly those in grades three through 12, to participate in pool testing. I'm asking the parents, if you've previously declined pool testing, I ask that you reconsider now that the schools are opening to all students five days per week. Pool testing is, we just found out that pool testing is actually going to be funded by the Commonwealth through the end of the school year. So originally, it was supposed to end on April 18th. It's now funded through the rest of the year. This is incredibly important for us to be able to monitor. And I do recognize that a lot of people are concerned if they test, what happens if their child is negative? They're going to lose school. It may be true that if we test somebody who's positive, that people will be in quarantine. And that quarantine time is at least five days before you can test, and then you can come back on day eight. And I know that's inconvenient, but this is a major way that we stop the spread of COVID in our schools. Being able to isolate quickly is incredibly important. And I ask you to reconsider participating in that process. Again, the better we can stop this now, the, the more apt we are to stop the potential of spread and clusters, which clusters are the one that causes schools to shut down. And we certainly don't want that. So anytime that there's a undetected case in school, we run a risk of having a potential cluster where there's student-to-student spread, and we've had very little of that. The town COVID data has remained consistent over the past six weeks with an average daily rate of approximately 24 cases per 100,000 residents, which is about six per day. The overall positivity rate in town has also been consistent at about 2.5%, as I've shown. The town has been in the yellow for the past 10 weeks, and the daily case rate has dropped from a high of 70.8 cases per day in January to about 24 to 25 as it is currently. While it's good news, I, we must remain vigilant in order to ensure that our schools remain open. That is the number one objective. We've all worked very hard to get our schools open. Now we need to keep them open, and testing is a very important tool to get there. Over the course of the school year, our schools have seen an average of 9.3 total cases, which is both staff and students per week. The vast majority of cases that caused quarantine for students to staff continue to come from outside sources from school. I still hear people doing, you know, where students are getting together, people are doing things or traveling. That continues to be a concern, and so I ask you to take that into consideration. And I will say, there has been one confirmed case recently of in-school transmission, which we addressed immediately. And over the course of the entire school year, staff cases have averaged not 1.9 cases, as I said earlier. The average of positive case, staff cases peaked during the months of December, January, and February, with an average of 3.6 cases per week during those months. For March and April, positive cases for staff have decreased and are below one now. So one of the things that we're going to talk about, we've heard a lot of concern about the April vacation coming up and staff travel. I'm not staff travel, but student travel. So I'm going to, again, reiterate that monitoring the spread of COVID-19 in our schools and community are essential for the safe operations of our schools. We ask that everyone in the HPS community please adhere to all advisories in relation to travel and COVID-19. And we're going to talk a little bit about those later tonight when, when the chair talks about potential policy changes, et cetera, that are coming up. We recognize that families have been isolated for a very long time, as staff has, and now want to travel. We understand it, we respect that, but we request that families partner with us in an effort to ensure the health and safety of our entire school community. If you are planning to travel out of state, please inform your school office staff and let them know the anticipated return date. Prior to a student's return to in-person learning, it is our expectation that all students pre-K through 12, who have traveled out of state, quarantined for, shouldn't be 10 days, not 14, I apologize for that, show proof of immunization or obtain a negative PCR COVID test no more than 72 hours prior to your return to Massachusetts. Please provide a copy of all negative test results to the school nurse prior to your student's return to the classroom. District is committed to making every effort to provide a safe learning environment for all students and staff and to minimize interruptions to instruction for COVID-related reasons. We need your help. So again, we understand that there are advisories, but, and we know that it's going to be inconvenient if you miss time when you come back from travel. But this is really imperative that we remain vigilant at this time in order for us to avoid more cases in school, which could potentially, and threaten to, to shut us down. We certainly don't want to do that. And so the COVID tested initiative, so in an effort to ensure a healthy return to school after the April vacation, the district is considered free, considering a free pool testing for all students on Friday, April 23rd. We're working on that now. We're asking for parent support of this initiative and believe it's in the best interest of our students to test as many individuals as possible at the conclusion of the break. Now, we know that that's not going to be available to everyone, and, and, but we, there are lots of opportunities to test. Pool test results will be available to the district between Saturday afternoon and Sunday morning. All students in a positive pool will be contacted and tested on Sunday, April 25th by qualified nurses with a Binax Now Rapid Test, which gives us results in about 15 minutes. Any student that tests positive for the Binax Now test will be required to quarantine for a period of 10 days before returning to school. And the district will conduct a survey, a survey later this week to determine how many families will participate during that process. I also want to say we're working on some other initiatives too. Empathy is going to be running its Cushing Street facility both on Sunday, I mean, on Saturday and Monday, that anybody can sign up for. And we are also looking at the potential of the district operating a clinic at that site on Cushing Street on Sunday for HPS personnel and students only, so that we can give every opportunity for families to test once they've traveled, to minimize the time that you need to wait to get a test and have it available to you. So the increase in in-person learning for all students. On March 29th, the HMS students began attending from 7:30, 11:30, 11:55, five days per week. As of this morning, April 5th, all in-person high school students have begun attending school from 8:00 to 12:05, five days per week. On April 26th, all in-person HMS students will attend school five full days per week. Adjusted schedules will be forthcoming soon. On April 26th, and this is new, as information, as we continue to look at schedules. But on April 26th, all in-person high school students will attend school five days per week. And those students that have classes scheduled in blocks G and H will remain for the full day. Any student who does not have a scheduled class during G and/or H block, but wishes to remain at school for a supervised study period during that time, will be permitted to do so in an assigned location. Students must commit to a supervised study block for the remainder of the year. Any student who does not have a scheduled class in the GRH block and wishes to be dismissed must have permission and will be expected to access afternoon asynchronous work remotely. So you'll be allowed to go home once you're done for the day. Please note, and this is important, that early dismissal during G and H block will be discontinued, other than for seniors, because seniors have always had senior privilege, should the Commissioner of Education determine an end to hybrid learning this year. So if they require that you must be in school for at least five and a half hours, then I'm going to have to end the early dismissal. But until they do that, we will allow you to be dismissed early, once you're done after your third block of the day. If you have an HMS or HHS student and have not completed a return survey, please contact your school principal as soon as possible. Thank you, that's, I'll take the questions.
Having some trouble on mute, thank you very much for that. Does anyone on the committee have any questions for Dr. Austin? Michelle?
I do, thank you. Question and a comment. So thank you for that great update. It was wonderful to hear so many students back in the classroom today. Can't believe it's been 13 months. And also, thank you to everyone, administration, and in particular, the classroom teachers who welcomed the students back, and to the parents for hanging in there with us. I think, Dr. Austin, you put it well earlier today when you said, "We've got them back in the schools. We need to keep them here now." So I would put a plug in for the pool testing as well, for folks to sign up on that. I know the, the medical professional, Dr. Del Cesto, who is on the High School Advisory Council, also, he cannot be here tonight, but he also said that he believes that testing is very valuable and very important for us to keep the students in school. Just one quick thing, Dr. Austin, because I know a communication had gone out today from the middle school, so I just wanted to clarify. The reason that we are limit, we are only doing testing one day at the middle school is so that we can do all the students earlier in the week, rather than doing half on Tuesday and half on Thursday. Correct?
That is correct. We were doing it twice a week because we were in different cohorts. So we had Cohort A on the first two days and B on the second. We don't need to do that anymore, we have them all. But also doing it on Tuesday, we then can identify quickly any students that could be in a possible pool, so they're not sitting there all week long. And then we can, we can detect that early and take action to identify and isolate. So it's not a reduction of testing, it's simply the reduction of what day, because all the students are now there and able to test on that day.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the committee? Liza?
Yeah, and as follow-up to that, yes, if anyone on this call, please share the interest in signing up for the pool testing. We really need to identify cases as quickly as possible. And Dr. Austin, thank you for, on the high school plan after April 26th about, we did hear from parents who would prefer that their child be released from directed study. But I would have people consider the idea that if your child stays in the directed study, we do know that it is safe to be in a classroom with their masks on, and could be safer for your child to stay in directed study, get their work done, than if they were released and out in the community and hanging out with friends and not supervised. That potentially could be more of a risk from the health standpoint to the student than if they did stay in the building for the remainder of the day. It's, it's a personal decision, but I think people should really remember both sides of it. And your child could be, health-wise, a little safer sitting at their desk, getting their work done, rather than hanging around with their friends unsupervised. So keep that in mind, but, and please, just another call, please take advantage of the testing. It's just safer for your whole family, and especially after vacation too. So thank you for offering that plan and coming up with that plan as well. I know that's a lot of work to add on to everything else that's going on in the interest of keeping everyone safe. So thank you.
Yeah, and if I could just reiterate, you know, we, we know that, that in that afternoon time, we also want to utilize that too. You know, that time can also be done for students who need some intervention time, a little extra support, et cetera. We're certainly willing to do that. We're certainly willing to offer that full day to any student that wishes to have it. We did hear from a lot of parents that did not want their children to, to be in school for that period of time during, during the last half of lunch, certainly. And then anytime that they didn't absolutely need to be there, we respect that. And certainly will honor that while we're able to do that continually in the high school setting. But I do want to make sure that people know that that time is available for students, and we'll certainly take advantage of whatever we can get with students and use that time. So we have that opportunity. So thank you for all of that.
Okay, anyone else on the committee? Okay, I just had two. One, so if a family does reconsider and wants to participate in the pool testing program, is the form easy to find on the website? Like, where would, where would they look?
If, I'm not sure it can be, I want to, before I say, "Yes, it's easy to find", if you actually, if you email Tony Keedy, Anthony Keedy, he will make sure that you get all the forms you need. So any of your school nurses would be able to find that, as well as Mr. Keedy can, can make sure you get that. So any of your school nurses would be able to find that, as well as Mr. Keedy can can make sure you get that form easily.
Yeah, I think that's great, because it's so much work to get everyone into school, and it's something we can celebrate, but we need to keep them there, so. And then on the high school schedule, you mentioned the students who don't have classes for G and H block could participate in a supervised study. Is that the same as directed study?
No, it's actually, I mean, a directed study is is one for credit, and Mr. Swanson could probably, and probably Carly Kennedy's on here, could probably tell me even more so, that directed would be for, for, a supervised study is a study block where you're not necessarily getting direct instruction for a specific set of of work, but rather that you are in a study, it is supervised, and you have the ability to ask for help, but it's more self-directed.
So does that, in the asynchronous work you referenced, does that count towards the structured learning time, time requirements?
Yes, and that's pretty much exactly what we do during the regular school year. You see a study hall. It's the same. It is a study hall.
Okay, okay.
And that does count, yes.
Okay. Carly, I saw your hand up earlier. I don't know if it was just you letting us know you're here, or you added something to ask about this?
Yeah, it was just against the panel, I'm sorry.
Okay, great. And Sarah Russ, if you could unmute yourself.
Sarah, I think you're still muted on your phone.
Yeah, I thought Sarah.
But it might not be Sarah.
I don't think this is Sarah. All right, Sarah. I'm going to ask you to unmute. Oh, there we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, I could just say your name. It was fine.
Sarah Ross, one-twenty-five Wampituck Road. Yeah, sorry, I didn't see that option to unmute until it popped up on the screen. I have a quick question on the high school schedule starting on the four-twenty-six date. Is that schedule assuming currently the, I'm probably not going to call it exactly the right words, but the day-one, day-two alternating schedule that they are currently doing as of today? Or will there be a different day schedule during that time?
Yeah, I believe it's the exact same one that you have now. That's what they're, they're working with. So it should be an A, A, B, C, G, D, E, F, H. For a two-day rotation, they'll rotate every two days.
Okay, so that would mean for the G or H blocks, if students don't have a scheduled class that either two or three days a week, if they were to participate in the supervised study, you would have that two or three times a week?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. So we'll move on to communications. And Carly, you want to unmute yourself?
Thank you. Hi, everyone. As you're all aware, in-class learning officially began today at the high school. So it was incredible to have classrooms full of students and have the school buzzing with activity. There are now upwards of fifteen desks in each classroom, thanks to the efforts of our custodians and some of our football players who helped with this process last week. Our student council also decorated the main lobby this morning with streamers and banners to celebrate today. And our seniors also wore their senior shirts, which is a first-day-of-school tradition every year. Our band, orchestra, and chorus classes were held for the first time in person today. And these groups were able to spread out in our school gym. And the drama club has also been able to resume their in-person rehearsal in the auditorium. We will have our first in-person student council meeting next week, as well as our National Honor Society ceremony will be able to have in person in the auditorium as well. Last year, we voted on students to attend a Massachusetts Student Government Day in which the names of our four winners were recently announced, and these individuals include Katie Allen, Grace Lipinski, El Kavna, and Kate Shembry. Also, seven students from HHS have been selected as finalists for our National History Day projects, and they will proceed to round two of their competition and hope that they'll have the chance to move up to the national level soon. And then lastly, two high school seniors, Jake Monte and Matt Gates, will proceed to the state DECA competition as the result of their success against hundreds of other students across the state. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That's great news. Does anyone have any questions, Carly? Okay, seeing none. Thanks so much, Carly. Next, we have communications received by the superintendent. Dr. Austin, do you have anything?
Thank you. I really don't have any direct communications, other than if you don't mind if I can indulge just for a second to add something that I should have added before, which was just a thank you to all of the teachers, the administrators, the support staff, et cetera, for making today possible. This has not been an easy time. It's been a very, very long road. There's still some bumps that need to be done, but I appreciate everyone's efforts. I appreciate they were still working on schedules with staff to make those work well for everyone, for the students, for the faculty as well. So we're still working on that. I appreciate their efforts. I appreciate that students, when I walk through the buildings, you, you could see it. I was at the high school this morning, and kids were excited about being there. It's very true. I was in the high, middle school last week, and the students were all very happy about being back. And I'm hearing the same from, you know, from, from people who are there every day. It's not easy. I think there are some scary moments. We need to stay vigilant, but that overall, it was very successful opening today. And as you said, I'll reiterate, we want to keep them there and keep moving. So just thank you to everybody. Thank you to the parents. Thank you for the students, our, our support staff, our faculty and our administration for all the great work that you do. It's very much appreciated.
Great, thank you. I completely agree. Seven point three is other communications.
I wanted to share with the committee, and I put it in your packet, that the planning board has been reviewing the draft master plan that I had the privilege of participating in, and their meetings have been conflicting with our school committee meetings. So I sent them a memo to share some thoughts, and the one point of the memo, and I'll read it for the community. I complimented the Chair Gordon Carr, who is a member of the Planning Board and did a great job of chairing the Master Plan Committee. But then I also shared that, for the first time, town meeting voted to include a school committee representative on the Master Plan Committee. Schools are identified as a valued asset by our community in the master plan. Also, I want you to be aware that I was able to provide input on the discussions regarding school facts, demographic information, operations and maintenance programs, and other school-related information, which helped inform committee members' opinions and recommendations. I was also able to update the school committee on our discussions of town government priorities that may impact the schools. For example, creating more affordable housing may increase the number of low-income families in Hingham, and the schools may need to apply the appropriate resources to educate the students from these families. These families are identified by the state as high needs, and the schools are currently addressing an achievement gap for the students as identified by the DESI criteria. Our town can only benefit from sharing of best practices and looking at opportunities for synergy between all departments. I encourage you to vote to continue school representation for future master plan updates and committees. So thank you for your consideration. So I just wanted to make sure that the school committee was aware that I shared that. And, you know, I think I've been sharing with you all along, but just wanted to make sure you knew that I sent that message along and hope you agree with it, too.
Definitely, yeah. And thank you for all your work on that committee, too. It's been, it's been a process. Next is eight point one, to review the updated fiscal year twenty-two budget and act as appropriate. Dr. Austin, I think this is you.
Thank you very much. And this is really the protocol. You, you voted for a budget already, but the budget you voted for, the, the actual number was a number that included the use of SRR funds within the budget itself. And so it's not quite aligned. It's the same amount overall as the Board of Selectmen and the AdCom voted for, but we're bringing this back for you to be able to reconcile the difference. So we do have a quick PowerPoint just to bring up speed on what you're voting for. Sherry, can you pull that up for me, please? You may not have it. You have it in your packet. I thought you had a copy of this ready to go for on the screen. I apologize for that. John, do you have that number right there in front of you? Because when you, when you take the number, oh, there it is. I'm sorry. Thank you. Here's the budget. So what we're looking at now, we originally looked at a budget that didn't include, that was sixty-one million. You voted for a sixty-one million, three sixty-two oh one nine, which was an eight-point-one-six percent increase, but included the SRR two funds in that, the four hundred thousand or four hundred and thirty thousand that we actually had. So that was the original that you voted for. So again, that was essentially what I'm looking for tonight is clarification. So it's essentially the same budget amount as March fifteen. It does move the SRR two back to the top line, so it shows a top line as the total budget amount. Shows the SRR two and the SRR three will be used to offset the top line in twenty-twenty-two and shows the school funding from the operations budget. Overall now, what we have, what we're looking for tonight, if you look at the, the budget after changes, of sixty-one million, seven ninety-two oh seven nine, or an eight-point-nine-two percent increase, this is the number that was voted on by the Board of Selectmen and AdCom. So that's the number when you go to, to vote tonight, sixty-one, seven ninety-two, oh seven nine. And this is just a backup of that. So once again, it has all the backup, what that is. I won't go through that again tonight. So that's, that's it. It just takes a, hopefully, a motion, and once you've done discussing.
Does anyone have any comments or questions on this?
John, did you want to add anything to that? I didn't invite you into that.
No, Paul, I think that's fine. Yep, that's it. Just, you know, the, we had a lot of talk, and this is the budget, the sixty-one, seven ninety-two, oh seven nine, or eight-point-nine-two percent is the budget that got approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee, with the understanding that funding from SRR two and SRR three would be directed towards that budget, you know, in the approximate amount of one million, three seventy-six, one ninety-two. So, you know, so that just breaks it up. Basically, we're using the, the government money for funding, and then the tax levy appropriation is sixty million, four one five, eight eight seven. But the reality is the whole budget is the sixty-one, seven ninety-two, oh seven nine, or eight-point-nine-two percent.
I agree. Any other questions, comments? We discussed this a lot last month, so we're probably good. Could you please pull up the, oh, sorry, Michelle, did you have something?
I was like, and the month before that.
Yeah.
And then maybe the month before that.
The month before that, by the way.
Would you mind pulling that PowerPoint presentation back up so we can see the number for the motion?
I think it's sixty-one, seven ninety-two, oh seventy-nine, I think. But Sherry, can you pull it up? Not that I would have that right off the top of my head. Sixty-one, seven ninety-two, oh seven nine, it was.
You think we'd have it memorized?
I had it. Sixty-one, seven ninety-two, oh seven nine.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
I'll be glad you make the motion. A move that we, we vote to approve the proposed fiscal year twenty, twenty-twenty-two budget without the reduction of SRR two and three funds to align the figures with the Board of Selectmen and AdCom numbers. That being sixty-one, seven ninety-two, seventy-nine.
Thank you. And any discussion? No. So, Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Libby? Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Budget is approved. Next is eight point two, to discuss the proposed district statement of equity and inclusion. Michelle, do you want to take this one?
Sure, thank you. There's, the draft for your review is in your packet, so I'm hoping everybody had a chance to look it over. So this is sort of a culmination of work that has been happening for the past year between the Policy Subcommittee as well as Dr. LaBillaud's Equity Task Force. And it's just one of those, I think, things that happens a lot in the background, and we haven't had a lot of chance this year to talk about it at our meetings. So I spoken to Carrie about it, and we just thought that it was a good time to sort of formalize a statement of the school committee on our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and to also have that statement be a, to show that the follow, what the follow-up actions will be. So now that the policies have been drafted, although we haven't adopted in segments, but we haven't formally adopted the whole policy manual now, but some of, that can now drive some of the work in the Code of Conduct and the student handbooks for the upcoming school year. And I think, I think everyone agrees there is some, could, could be some enhancements to those policies and, or not to the policies, but to the Code of Discipline and the student handbook to, to ensure that we are having actions that support diversity, equity, and inclusion, and make the schools a supportive and welcoming environment for all of our staff and all of our students. So this statement is just to indicate our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and then set up action steps for what, what will follow.
Do you want to read it for the public?
Sure. I will read it. I am just trying to figure out why I can't get the whole thing. Okay. This is the Hingham School Committee Statement of Action Promoting Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. The Hingham School Committee pledges that diversity, equity, and inclusion are not just an initiative. They are the tenants that drive the district's mission. Therefore, the Hingham School Committee pledges to continually review, adopt, and implement district policies that ensure an inclusive educational environment for all students, regardless of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, disability, socioeconomic status, homeless status, physical and intellectual differences, pregnancy or pregnancy-related condition, veteran status, and/or foster care status. The implementation of these policies, coupled with the work of the district's Equity Task Force, will lead to a comprehensive update to the Hingham Public Schools Code of Conduct and the student handbook for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. The Hingham School Committee is committed to continuing the work so that every student and staff member is welcomed, valued, and included. There's a typo in there. I just noted that I skipped over, but we can correct that.
Great, thank you. Does anyone in the committee have anything? Liza?
Thank you for drafting this. This is, I think this does state what we've been focused on. In the third paragraph regarding the handbook, I would just make the proposal that the implementation of these policies will lead to a comprehensive evaluation and update to the Hingham Public Schools Code of Conduct and the student handbook, and then during the twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two school year. I think, in fairness to the staff, it would be very challenging to have this work done in time for the twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two school year. And so, and I appreciate the effort, but I'm, and I want to see it done, but I would worry to get it done by August would be a little challenging.
Carlos?
Great job, Michelle, and Dr. LaBois and your team. This is great. You know, I wholeheartedly support this, and not only that, I go one step further that, you know, the Chair would consider initiating a subcommittee where we can actually be part of it, and we can, we can continue driving changes. Again, I will repeat one of the things that have been said a hundred times. I would love to see a mandated, as part of orientation, every year. a diversity training for all staff, from the custodian to the superintendent. And this would be done on an yearly basis. And you wanted to make sure that everyone is certified that they attend their classes. Whether you wanted to consider that as part of PD, whatever you want to do. But this is something that every single staff, or seven hundred staff should go through. And so understanding, you know, some of the words that it could be hurtful to some out here, so we don't use it. So again, I am in full support of this. And if you do begin a subcommittee, I would love to be part of. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. I think as far as the handbooks and the policies go, the Policy Subcommittee will drive that, but we'll see where this goes as the equity work continues. Any other? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. I would agree with Liza regarding the handbooks and the Code of Conduct and making that change. Just, we did discuss this briefly at our Policy Subcommittee meeting this, this afternoon. And it just, I, we want to make sure we do it correctly and, and do it right, rather than do it quickly. So not to say we're leaving this and nothing will happen between now and the next year, but but the staff seem to feel that it would be, it would be more and more productive to work on it over. We could probably start it over the summer, but then over the, the next school year. So I don't know how people feel about that.
Are there some other? Like, are there any things that we could enhancements to at least make, like in the next? In it, for the upcoming school year into, in the handbook and the Code of Discipline? I, I think there's some feeling concern in the community that there aren't enough. There's not like enough bite to some of the Code of Conduct issues where it comes to incidences of racism or, or anti-Semitic remarks, homophobic remarks, gender issues. So is there any way that we can incorporate some changes for the next school year?
Dr. LaBillaud?
Hi, thank you, Chairwoman Nie. I, I just wanted to maybe, I am preparing an equity update for the next School Committee meeting. We are meeting on Mon, Wednesday to actually begin to schedule and organize all of our courageous conversations. That's a series we launched just about a week or two ago. We already have seventy plus people in the community who have volunteered to come in and speak with us. So I wanted to be able to give you a little bit more structure around. Here's what's happening. Here's when it's happening. But Michelle, to your point, you're not wrong, right? So the, the team, the administrative team is looking at how do we best address those? Actually, not a part of the Code of Discipline. The, the idea being we want to have, we, we're going to be adopting restorative justice practices. And that requires comprehensive training with the Center of Restorative Justice at a Suffolk University Law School. And so that training begins this spring with our administrative team. There's a two-day intensive institute over the summer. And then fifty hours of coaching for our administrative staff, as well as the introduction of restorative justice-based professional development offerings to our teachers who are sort of early adopters. The thought being that as we did research into how best do we deal with issues of bias and prejudice within a community, restorative practices really seem to be the best way to get at the underlying relationship damage that's caused by these, that these, by these acts. The other part of the feedback that we get a lot from the community is the other side doesn't know what's happening to the other side, right? There's not a lot of communication when you go into a discipline mode. This is a more collaborative process where both sides sit together to repair the damage that's been done to the relationship or to the school community, and then work on ways to best improve and sort of come out of that with a new understanding. That could involve training. It could, it actually could involve discipline if, in fact, the discipline codes are violated. But what we generally find through the investigations that we've completed is that we really don't have a great framework of how to anchor the conversation. And so the thinking was if we could get the training in place first and allow the staff to begin to work with it, and then sort of go out to community forums, talk to the community, we're, we're talking about major shifts in the way we interact with kids, interact with the community, interact with families. And we felt it best to take that a little bit more thoughtful and a little bit, not that it wouldn't be thoughtful, but a, a measured approach made more sense to us because we will be really trans, again, transforming the way we work with families and kids to actually get at some of these concerns. So that is starting this spring, right? So, so that's not necessarily a part of the Code of Conduct, but as the Code of Conduct is restructured and re, like, sort of rethought, we want to make sure that our administrators and our community begin to have a sense of the framework that we want them to use to actually work through those issues. And I'm just afraid if we make the handbook changes first, we may uncover pieces that don't work necessarily as we begin to implement. And so it's not that we wouldn't be doing anything, but the, the handbook is essentially the policy guide, right? For families and students. We want to make sure that that's done correctly before we launch something, before we've had the time to train the staff. And so that's the only reason I think I gave, that we talked this morning with, with Paul, and he likely passed on to the Policy Subcommittee, just if we could just have the year not to say that we weren't going to do anything different, because in fact, we're going to be piloting this whole new approach to dealing with these issues, which requires careful professional development and coaching, right? Particularly as we embark in this conversation. It's a, it's a new area for us. And so it's our traditional way of taking it a little bit more thoughtful, slow rollout to, to ensure that what we do end up with is functional, and it works for our community and our kids and our faculty, our administrators and our staff, right? We want to make sure that whatever we put in writing in terms of this is how we will approach incidents that deal with X. We want to make sure that people have the foundational training and understanding to know now how to implement. And I, and I, I'm just nervous of doing them both hand in hand. May lead to some unintended outcomes that would be avoidable if we just took a little bit of a slower, more thoughtful approach. But that's just sort of the background. We are making changes. We are substantively revising the way we would deal with these issues. But that does require a little bit of time to sort of work out, maybe like a pilot phase, right? In the fall where we actually begin to implement. And it could be that we sort of, the administrators choose, is this going on the discipline or is this going, which route do we go? And begin, actually cases it in the middle of a couple of investigations now, and we're actually using the principles of restorative practices and restorative justice as the framework to address the concerns that we're uncovering. And, and right now it's being met with really good feedback in terms of how it's going and sort of not having it just be viewed as a discipline approach, but really rethinking the way that we approach the, the issue at a sort of a top level. And that was sort of the rationale behind the request to not, again, we're not suggesting that we don't do anything. We actually are doing quite a lot. It's just as, that's going to be a major area of training and focus over the summer for the administrative team. And I would want to make sure that we gave them enough time to be trained, to think it through and begin to experience some things and actually make some thoughtful adjustments and edits as needed before we went right into changing the handbook. Does that make sense or clarify a bit? I just wanted to bring that piece. I know that I haven't given an update in a, in a bit to the equity work, but we are about to sign that contract with Suffolk University. We have, we're in the middle of the Rides Training Program with Harvard University right now. Actually, Ness and I will be there tomorrow morning again for a next training, as well as our Courageous Conversation Series, and I'll give you an update on the data analysis, which is actually underway, looking at access to upper-level courses across the secondary level. So we do have a lot to update the committee on. But that training in particular, I thought, might help highlight the discussion around the handbook revisions and why we're requesting it to be approached just a little bit differently.
Thank you. Michelle, did you have? Okay. Liza?
Yeah. So maybe one thing too, when, when we're talking today in policy about, you know, finally approving, because the, the whole new policy manual, maybe policy could even just do a glance at the handbooks and see if there's any just policy changes we made that we need to coordinate with the handbooks just to make sure that that part of it is corrected. And then obviously, the Code of Conduct and the Restorative Justice, that is a very different way of operating and a very positive. And it's really going to bring results. I have a little bit of experience exposure to it, and I think it's very exciting and a really good long-term change. But I think we should take a look just to check with our new policies. Make sure that that's coordinated. But I think, did it mask, do some of that too? Carrie?
Yeah, that, that's what I was thinking, because when we went through the policy manual, we, we did look at it through the equity lens. MAC does too, because that's a big, it's a big priority for them too. So, yeah, if we, if we can, I think a low-hanging fruit might be going through the handbooks and maybe the Code of Conduct and making sure they're in line with, with the new policies. We should do that anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, sorry. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I, I do, I'm glad to see the, the transition over to restorative justice. I think, you know, consequences as well, right? When there are these, when these incidents do happen is important as well. And I just, I, and I totally hear you, Jamie, and I appreciate it because I know it's a, it's a, it's a big shift for the district. And I'm very heartened to hear it because I think it's a shift in the definite right direction. I just, you know, I just worry about things like, you know, what happened in Duxbury, and clearly that had been going on for, you know, some time. And, you know, we, we need this work, right? We need bystander training. You know, students need to know when to speak up and when to not. I think they need to have the understanding of what the consequences are, what the potential is, what the impact that they are having on their fellow students. So appreciate all that work that is going into it. And if we can even make changes, you know, just that, you know, make it very clear that these things are not tolerated. Maybe if we need to expand in either the handbook or the Code of Conduct, you know, what, what, what is, what, what are, what is inclusive, what is, what, what's, what we are trying to do, the culture we're trying to drive here, even if it's just a interim change. So if the Policy Subcommittee can take a look at that and just make sure the policies line up with the, those, the handbook and the Code of Conduct, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't see anyone else in the School Committee. So Katie Sutton, let's see.
Am I unmuted?
You're good. Yep.
Okay, good. Hi, um, thank you very much. I, I'm excited about the Restorative Justice stuff too. Thanks for the report on that. I just kind of echo Michelle's, I guess, like a slight more sense of urgency in terms of just, let's just try to do this work concurrently. I, I understand Dr. LaBillaud's point about, you know, not getting the cart out in front of the horse. But I do think there are things that we could be doing. Like you said, look at what we have now and just kind of make sure that our values are clear, as well as making sure that the way we communicate them to the community is clear. You know, I, I know I sent over some precedent from Newton, just even the outward-facing materials on the website. How do I report an incident? You know, things like that. We don't really, we don't have a whole lot of clarity around that in our community, and I think that would be helpful. And it's something that we could work on concurrently with what's happening in terms of the Restorative Justice training. And I just, you know, I, I guess I just don't want perfection to be the enemy of progress. I feel like we could do some stuff. Maybe set a goal of, you know, December, you know, rather than just kind of this amorphous sometime next year. Maybe just set a tangible goal, a, a date or something. Because I just worry that it's just going to keep sliding. And, you know, if we have another crisis, it'll slip. And I just think this is important. These kids are being subjected to trauma. And I don't think that it should go, it should go un, un, unaddressed. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I would say it's not going unaddressed. I mean, the Policy Subcommittee, it's not super exciting work, but we've been doing this all year, going through all of the policies and up, and updating them. And again, looking at them through an equity lens. So, I mean, the work has been happening, and the Equity and Task Force has been doing a lot too. So I wouldn't say anyone's going to let it slide at all. And I hear you on the urgency. I think it, it's super important. Tim Dempsey?
Am I unmuted?
You're good.
All right, Tim Dempsey, eighty-eight Kilby Street. I just want to thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone, so much for the work with equity intolerance policies. I fully support the transition to restorative justice. That's often a multi-year process. So I think, you know, I think we can have, you know, like Katie Sutton said, both urgency and, you know, to be, you know, careful as we progress forward through it. One thing I just want to add to the conversation is encourage there to be student voice. Not just in sort of gathering student opinion about it, but having actual student voice in the creation of the policies for the schools, because I think with these policies and Restorative Justice speaks to this, student buy-in is so important. You know, the teachers can sort of create whatever policy they want, but there really needs to be some student fingerprints on it. And especially considering that a lot of the activism, driving the push to get these policies was really student-driven. I think it's moving forward in this direction is wonderful, and I think we can just be very careful that the changes that we make in the policies that we build are solid and will exist into the future and aren't sort of a temporary quick-fix Band-Aid to change, you know, some of the wording in the policies, but it really is some substantive change. So I thank you very much for starting this process and look forward to it.
Okay, thanks. I don't see anything else. So nine point one is to hear a report on proposed summer school program. Dr. LaBillaud, too?
Hello, good evening, everyone. My, I'm here this evening to share the, the initial planning of the Summer Acceleration Academy. So what I'll do is I will go into share screen mode. I have a brief presentation to give you an overview of the programming that we're proposing across elementary, middle, and then high school. And then I'll come out of the share mode for any questions or comments or concerns. But also, I hope, you know, by now, if there's any questions as I'm going, just please feel free to unmute, interrupt. As I go into share screen, it becomes difficult to see everybody on the right, so I will be listening in. So feel free to interrupt if there's any questions or comments. And I will, again, come out of the share screen at the end and take a more formal opportunity for questions and comments. So if you don't mind, I will share my screen and make the presentation. I just need to be given the privilege to share the screen. So I'm getting messes, the host disabled this participant's green share. Thank you. I apologize. Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain. Here we go. So again, we, my goal for this evening is to give you an overview of the district's programming in our summer acceleration academies. So the agenda for the, the presentation would really be in four parts. The first is to over, a quick overview of the acceleration goals as we head into next school year. Part two is to give a review of the elementary acceleration programming and the criteria for selection and how we'll go about actually the procedures for selection. The same will repeat itself for secondary. So the S C L focus and the executive functioning where elementary has more of an academic focus. Secondary has more of a social, emotional, and executive functioning focus. Again, reviewing the selection criteria and the selection procedures. And then finally, the health and safety protocols. And when that's finished, I'll, again, come back for any comments or questions or concerns. So as we begin, as my office has begun to plan for the reopening of school in the twenty one, twenty two school year, we really have established three major areas of focus to guide our planning. The first is to a complete focus on academic engagement. So the goal is to really re-engage our students in, in learning, to develop a sense of belonging and togetherness. One of the things that the pandemic has highlighted is feelings of disconnection and isolation from teachers, from community, from peers. And our goal as we reopen is to really foster that sense of belonging and togetherness and really have that be a major focus as we head into the next school year, as well as fostering and developing personal wellness, again, for our students, our faculty, and our staff. Another thing that the pandemic really exposed is the coping mechanisms, right? That we have in our own lives to manage when life gets tough. And our goal is to really refocus on personal wellness and help kids and staff develop and foster good coping and wellness activities. And the, the work on the reopening really begins in the summer through the academic, elementary academic acceleration academies and our, our secondary, S, social, emotional, learning, and executive functioning academies. So I'll start first with an overview of elementary. The focus for the elementary will be on both reading and mathematics skills. Right now, we are proposing to launch our academies in mid-August. The feedback there is, several years ago, when the district had some surplus Title I funding, we actually launched a series of summer bootcamps, getting kids ready, skill-building to get ready for the new school year. And while the name was less than ideal, the intent was great. And the feedback that- And the feedback that we received from the participants and the teachers was that it was perfectly well timed and placed in terms of the summer. A lot of families do choose to vacation July through early August, but by mid-August, most families are back and settled, preparing for the school to reopen. So we are looking at a total of eight days, August 16th through 19th, as well as August 23rd through 26th. Three hours per day, 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. And the focus again here will be on both mathematics and reading. Now, the size of the proposed program for elementary really does not allow us to contain it all in one building. We're actually going to be using two sites to run the summer academies. Both East and Foster will be together and will attend, attend the program at the Foster Elementary, while South and Plymouth River will be together and they will attend school at South Elementary. Students will attend in person, there will not be a remote option. In transportation, if required or needed, will be provided by the district through the district's transportation system. In terms of open seats, right now, we are planning on a total of 80 seats. So 40 seats for the South Campus with the South Plymouth River, 40 seats for the Foster Campus, which is Foster and East, for a total of 80 seats across first, rising first graders who are our current kindergartners. The same is true for our rising second and third graders with our fourth, fifth and sixth graders moving to 20 seats per grade. And the focus here is really on our primary age students, so K1 and 2, and a real focus on literacy and foundational math skills with those, with those students. Across both campus, we're aiming to serve about 160 students. With the, the high, middle school students will actually be served at, at the middle school, rather, or the rising sixth graders, I should say, will be at the middle school versus at elementary. So we're looking at 160 or a total of 320 seats available in the elementary academy. In terms of selection criteria, the program will be invitation based. So for the math, the criteria will be both teacher referral and assessment of fact fluency, as well as results of the midterm assessments given through our everyday mathematics program. And in reading, we'll be looking at, again, teacher referral, foundational skills, again, most likely through the DIBELS assessment, as well as an assessment of comprehension. And so using those three metrics, we'll develop a list of students. And what will happen is students, again, will be attending invitation only. The invitations will be delivered, the first round, I should say, will be delivered on May 1st. Why May 1st? That's because we need actual time to complete our spring screenings. They're in progress now. You heard my, my data presentation a few months ago that focused on the winter screenings. And now we're in the process of completing the spring screenings, again, to get fresh data, to look at where the students are, particularly as we make, elementary has made a return to full days. We also need time for our teachers to be able to conduct their referrals and utilize a comprehensive uniform process where they're looking at sort of the same metrics and being asked to rate their students accordingly. And that will take a little bit of time. So that's why the May 1 date is our targeted launch for the invitations to begin for the program. So students will be reviewed by school-based teams, based against the identified criteria. What will happen is we will look at the students who require the most acceleration and they will be invited first. So we'll invite the first, say, 40 for the South Campus, 40 for the Foster Campus. And as families have other plans or decline attendance, we'll then bring in more students. This is the same process actually that we used several years ago with our Title I summer programming. And we ended up in the end, being able to accommodate all students who wanted to attend, believe it or not, given family decisions to not attend or vacation plans as it, you know, as it happens, it may, everyone may not be available. If a student is identified for support in either reading or math, they'll actually be invited to attend both skills. So they will be there for both reading and mathematics, even if they've only been identified one area of focus. In terms of secondary, they're going to have a slightly different focus. Their focus will be on social, emotional learning and executive functioning skills. So things like organization, time management, study skills and getting prepared for the opening of school. The dates and times will look the same, again, August 16th through 19th, and again, the 23rd to 26th. Eight days total, 8:30 to 10:30, sorry, 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. Our rising sixth graders will have an academic focus in both reading and math, while a seventh and eighth grade and high school students will focus on social, emotional learning and executive functioning. We'll further, we will actually help support the completion of their summer work and begin to support for beginning of the school year, get set up in lockers, get kids organized, particularly kids who are new to a building will have a particular focus and support as they reend, as they enter a new building for the first time. And once again, the goal here is to actually provide transportation to every family that may need it, so that no student is turned away for lack of being able to get there. So we will be able to transport. In terms of program capacity, we're looking at 20 seats for both S, social, emotional learning, as well as executive functioning skills across the secondary, for a total of 240 students who would be invited across the grade spans for, for participation in the program. Again, at the secondary level, we're also looking at an invitation based program. In terms of social, emotional learning, we'll be using teacher referral, council referrals, as well as the result of the strengths and difficulties questionnaire screening, which is given to all of our secondary students. In terms of executive functioning, we'll be looking at both teacher and council referral, particularly focusing on the way students present in class and identifying those students who may need additional support to find success as we head into next school year. The invitations again will be identified on, will be sent out on May 1. Again, we need time to conduct the screenings and to do the teacher referrals and we'll use the same process as elementary. Now, the only difference here is grade six students will actually follow the elementary procedures and we provided support in the LA and math. High school, really, their focus really is going to be on our school avoidant students. So we do have some students who, we've even had some challenges getting into school. And so in talking in particular with the high school, they felt that this program would be most beneficial to really target those students who have had the most challenge over the last year, both socially emotionally and via executive function, to ensure that they get the right support to be able to return to school and be successful when they return. In terms of health and safety protocols, generally they're the same protocols as this school year. We'll be utilizing three to six feet of, of physical distancing. We will be requiring masks and daily cleaning and sanitizing of high touch surfaces, as well as classroom based surfaces. Right now, we're targeting for group sizes to be one faculty for every 10 students or a 1 to 10 ratio. Guidelines for summer programming are actually still being developed by the Department of Elementary and Education. And we will use and apply any updated guidance as it becomes available. And participants will be provided more in-depth information as we get closer to August. So once the state has released their final revisions for reopening of schools and for summer programming, we'll make any adjustments to our health and safety protocols as, as may be needed. And again, families who are invited to participate will get more information as we get closer to the launch date in August. And at that point, that's just a brief overview. Let me come out of shared screen and I will be happy to, if I could just figure out how to, here we go.
Sheri, can you, I mean, Jamie, can you also put Sheri as the host again, please?
Yeah, yeah, I will.
Thank you.
I got you, man, yep.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Hi, I'm mute?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, good. I would just, just quickly suggest that these dates be put up on our website, perhaps in my guideline, set up such as the date, the families would be invited to participate and when they would need to alert that they wanted to participate. I just think getting that information out there would be helpful for some families. If they plan their end of the, end of the summer, I know, and I appreciate that it's more towards the end of the summer, as you had mentioned earlier. When you had done a similar program, it was more towards the middle. But just, just putting the dates out there, that's all suggesting.
So just a reminder, it will be invitation only, so they won't sign up. And so the goal was to make the formal presentation tonight to the committee. And the principals will be sending out newsletter announcements and sort of making it more aware in the community. And we'll also post all the materials to the website, Jen. So that's a great suggestion.
Yeah, like the, the invitation date that they would, if they would hereby, for those who are invited in. Thank you.
Thank you. Liza?
Jamie, can you explain how this program either supplements or complements the special education ESY program?
Yeah, so I'll actually let Suzanne speak to that. This is actually an independent program of that, but students who have disabilities actually may be invited in, that they have equal opportunity to participate. So maybe Suzanne, do you want to talk a little bit about the programming? And that's another reason for our timing was to allow the ESY program to run its full course before we got into the acceleration programming. So I'll let Dr. Venice speak a little bit about her programming.
Yes, the extended school year programming will hopefully be looking very familiar as it has in the past. We have some expansions that we're going to have to inevitably put into place for any overflow of COVID compensatory services or any other compensatory services that we've accumulated throughout the year. So we were going to incorporate that into our planning. But our students with disabilities are of course, general education students first. So they would be considered for any of the additional planning that's occurring, just like any other student. But the process to be eligible for extended school year services through special, special education, take the form as it always has, which is through the team process and is reflected on student IEPs.
Thank you. Michelle, did you have something?
Can I follow up on that, Carrie?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself quick enough. So will the ES, when will the ESY families get their notification of their program?
So it should be reflected on, on the IEPs as they are written. But the notifications that, for enrollment that will be coming out of my office will be happening toward the end of the month.
Okay, good.
But it shouldn't be a surprise to families of, it should be a developed as part of the team meetings that they have been participating in.
Okay, thank you. Michelle?
Thank you. Thanks, this looks very, a great program. So thank you for all the work that goes into also preparing a summer program. I just had a quick question actually on staffing. Would be Hingham Public School teachers or hopefully Hingham Public School teachers? And if we don't have enough, like, how does that work?
So that's why we have a tentative goal of 1 to 10, but that, that is dependent on staffing. So in the next week or two, we'll begin to recruit and post. Then that's another reason for the timing, thinking that we may, you know, give everybody a bit of a break before we begin to recruit. The secondary program will also be tapping into our counseling and our behavioral health staff and not just our teachers, right? To be, to support, we may have some special education teachers, some regular teachers, but also have some counselors and adjustment counselors and guidance counselors there, and perhaps some school psychologists to help run some groups. So at the elementary level, we are hoping, again, to find eight teachers per grade, which is a decent amount, which is why we may be sort of playing a little bit with the ratios. But again, the, we'll know more, and I can certainly update the committee as it unfolds and the recruiting begins. But our goal right now is to have a 1 to 10 ratio of Hingham Public School staff. It is not uncommon though, if we may have a teacher from another district who would like to teach with us for the summer, that's also appropriate. And then they would be paired with the appropriate Hingham person. The, the groupings will also, I didn't get into this a lot because I was trying to keep it general, but based on the screenings, kids will be grouped together based on skill. So that like that entire group of 10, that's why there's so many groupings, is to actually be able to really narrow down the particular areas of skill development the kids need and have them grouped together to make the time more efficient, only for the kids, but also for the teachers preparing. So we may have a fluency group, we have a comprehension group, we may have a vocabulary development group, we may have a phonemic awareness group, right? So the idea is by having so many groups, we can actually really tailor the specific skill development the kids are working on. And again, we have all of their data as compared against the norm. So we have a good sense of where we want to get them, sort of coming out of the spring screenings, which is why we are not quite ready to launch the, the invitations just yet. We're in progress now. But by May 1, we should have a good sense of the groupings, the skill needs, and hopefully have a better sense of staffing to begin to make. And I also should mention to the committee that this is, the funding for this program has been graciously provided by the Hingham Education Foundation, as well as by our state grant money, the ESA Part 1. So that's where we're using to actually build the program. But we are very appreciative for the Hingham Education Foundation grant too of $55,000, which actually helped ensure that we can invite all kids on an invitation needed basis, which is wonderful. And actually provide transportation, which will be huge. One of the biggest barriers we hear in terms of feedback for summer programming is parents' work schedules and just it being really difficult to actually get the kids to the buildings. And we're hoping transportation being provided for those, the families that need it, will help increase attendance at the, at the programs.
Yeah, thank you, and I agree. Really appreciate the support of HEF as always. They, they do so much for the district. My question about this is, is it, is it enough time to, to meet the needs? I just, you know, it's, I think, three hours a day, four days a week for two weeks.
Yeah, so this was based on Carrie, the, the recommendation of our reading and math specialist, who felt like that was the right amount of time. That we're really looking at it as a launching into the next school year, right? So it's sort of accelerating learning heading into a new school year. And they felt like one week was a little too short. Three or four weeks got a little laborious relative to retention and timing of when the skill was taught, where they felt two weeks was sort of that sweet spot and just right. Now, to be fair, we are actually looking at if the, when the budget passes and get our elementary, our intervention model in K to 8 academically gets, gets restructured. We're actually going to be looking at sort of a whole new kind of intervention heading into next school year, where these, we'll have a great deal of data on our most at risk kids heading into the new school year, which is another reason why the timing made a lot of sense. So we didn't lose too much time. And we also had to be careful we didn't overlap because we wanted to make sure we invited kids who might be eligible under IDEA to attend as well. And we really didn't want to have to get into choosing which ones to attend if we got any overlap. So this gives ESY to run and then it gives a week, a week or two break before the acceleration academies kick in. And they're also ending before the return of staff activities begin, to make sure the staff are then available for mentoring and support. So right now, it's our best educated guests, from our experts in the field, saying this is what we think would be most ideal. But again, we'll be happy, we'll be certain to sort of, again, one of the big pieces of the, of the program will be data tracking. So any students who may need additional support will know that heading into the next school year and be able with the specialists and the new roles, be able to really target those kids for intervention right when school starts.
Great, so you can hit the ground running.
Absolutely, that was the intent, right?
Okay, I don't see, I think I see anything else from the school committee. Tim Dempsey?
Sorry, thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. Tim Dempsey, still at 88 Kilby Street. I was just wondering for, I know it's not, the Acceleration Academy isn't a special ed program. In choosing the kids that go into it, I know a lot of kids already have either social, emotional goals or executive function goals on their IEPs. Will their IEPs be sort of part of the picture, an explicit part of the picture that's used when determining which kids would be appropriate?
If they're selected based on their skill, Tim, then yes.
Right, okay. Okay.
Yep. He went away. But yes, they will.
Okay, all right. Yeah, well, thank you, that was, that was, that was very helpful. Okay, so unless anyone else has anything for Dr. LaBilla? Nope, okay, well, we appreciate you, the presentation, thank you. 9.2 is to discuss a potential travel, travel policy revision. This is a first read and it should be in everyone's packets. The policy subcommittee met this afternoon. Let me see, let me pull it up. To go over, you know, we approved a temporary COVID travel policy back in, in August, I think it was. And I'm not seeing it.
I can share a screen if you want me to, Carrie.
That'd be great.
Sheri, can you let me share a screen, please?
And so we, we approved, there we go. So we approved it back in August, but the governor has since lifted the travel restrictions and now it's an advisory. So we wanted to update it and we thought it was really important to do this before April break, because we know some families are planning to travel. Can I just, did everyone get this in their packet? It was, it would have been a really late addition because we met at 3:30 this afternoon, so.
I did not, Carrie.
I don't think it's there.
I just checked my file.
Well, this is going to be a first read, we can talk about it. My hope was to do the first read tonight and then just do a special school committee meeting before, sometime before April break, so we could, we could approve it. But if people feel like they need more time, we can discuss that. Okay. So the main thing, this is, is there any way to? So the main thing, this is, is there any way to zoom in a little bit?
All right, yeah.
If you just pinch your screen, you can, like, you can make it bigger yourself. Does that?
It doesn't work on mine.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay.
Okay, okay, so it's just.
I'm the old lady version.
Okay, so for anyone who's traveling out of state for more than 24 hours, we're asking families to inform the school staff that they're traveling and provide a return date. Oh, that's good. Okay, thanks. Prior to a student's return to in-person learning, have the student either quarantine for a period of 10 days or obtain a negative P C R or a pooled COVID test within 72 hours of the return to Massachusetts. We're asking people to provide a copy of a negative P C R COVID test to the school nurse prior to returning to the classroom. The H P S absence policy remains in effect, and the impact of the absence may impose consequences on course credit. So. Okay, so and then students and families are encouraged to think about their travel plans and think about the academic impact that'll have on that. And then people are asked to contact their principals for any other information or questions. And again, I think everyone knows this, but just to reiterate that students who are displaying symptoms of COVID-19 are instructed not to report to school. So I don't know if anyone in the committee has anything. Could we come out of shared screen? Does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments?
So, yes, Dr. Austin made a good point during the policy committee meeting this afternoon that Dr. Austin, I think, might bear repeating now is that the, it's important that the families follow these protocols because of the consequences if they don't to losing out on the end of year activities and possible graduation too. So, Dr. Austin, do you want to speak a little bit about that?
Yeah, I just want to, and I know we spoke about that earlier when I gave my earlier presentation, but honestly, just to get people to comply with this is so important. I know it's inconvenient for some. There is a lot of concern because athletics starts on the same day as the 26. And we are working on policy for that. There will be a no harm policy to anyone who would be trying out or have to quarantine due to COVID. So there would be no harm. So you would be able to join a team at a later date and be evaluated as a tryout if that were necessary. And so we're working on those things. But overall, you're right. And I want to tell people that, once again, you know, we see after a period of travel, we've seen that, that pattern every, every time we've had a break. We've seen the pattern of increase in cases. So if you play that out on the longevity, as far as the weeks go by, if we had a problem, that's going to show up somewhere probably in the middle of May, right in the middle of that month of May. And again, if it's a very big problem, you know, there's a lot of end-of-the-year activities. And one of those is, you're right, it's graduation, it's all kinds of other activities that happen at the end of the school year. I don't want to put any of those in jeopardy. So while I understand it's an inconvenience to test, we're going to do our best to give you every opportunity to be able to do that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday of that vacation week to allow you to test, to get the negative test, then come back to school. And again, missing two days now or three days, even if you had to, is certainly a lot better than missing days later down the road when they become much more important with the end-of-the-year activities.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything? Okay. All right, so Laura Donnelly, put your hands up.
Sorry, Laura McCorr Donnelly, 98 Manatee Road. I just had a question about the policy including vaccinations. Some of our students, some of the students 16 and above are, are eligible for vaccinations either through work or come, or health conditions. And, and if the school policies, including travel policies, will include proof of vaccination or not having to quarantine because they've been vaccinated, something along those lines.
Thank you. We didn't really discuss that, and the 16-plus age care, age bracket, I believe, is not eligible until the 19th to even start doing that. So it might be a little early. It's definitely something we should think about going forward. But I think for this particular revision, we hadn't talked about vaccination.
Actually, I, I believe some 16-year-olds have qualified because of work. Some have qualified because they had two health conditions today, 16 with one health condition qualified. And then it opens up, like you said, on the 19th. But yeah, there are some receiving vaccinations.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm aware of that. It's, it's just that we can't really require students to get vaccinated when there are so few that are actually able to access it yet. But I definitely think it's worth keeping in mind and looking at.
Can they show proof of vaccination in order to not have to quarantine?
I don't.
Upon return?
You do have, just so we can, I think we can take that up in policy committee again really quickly, Carrie. I think there is the opportunity. There are students who are vaccinated, and the new guidelines from the CDC say that if you have had vaccination and you show proof of vaccination, that you wouldn't necessarily have to quarantine if you had exposure to COVID, et cetera. So I think it's something that's worth looking at if you want to look at that to determine if we would exclude those. But I would also say to everyone, again, just because you have the vaccine doesn't mean that you don't, you couldn't possibly have it or carry it for somebody else. So I would still encourage if you've traveled, and I'm going to, you know, I would suggest the same thing for any staff member, et cetera. You might have vaccination, but I still encourage people to test. That way, we can identify you. Certainly wouldn't have to necessarily quarantine, but would know, you know, if there's the presence of COVID that others could be potentially exposed to.
Okay, great, yeah. And I do think that's something we should talk about in policy. Jen?
Just something for the subcommittee to consider. I didn't know if you were considering all students. I know with the previous travel restrictions, it was only, if it was children under age 10, did not have to show a test. I think they had to show their, a negative test from their parents. And I just was wondering if you were considering all students ages 10 and under and 10 and up, that's all.
Yeah, we were certainly, we were, we were asking any student who has traveled regardless of, from kindergarten on up, yes. And we certainly see that within our schools. We see kindergarten students become infected and need to quarantine, et cetera. So we would ask that all students if they travel to potentially test for us.
Thank you.
Okay, Sarah Ross?
Can you guys hear me? Sarah Ross, 125 Wampe Tuck Road. Can you also clarify, is it all travel to all states? Or is this high-risk, low, or like are low-risk states not a part of the policy or not a part of the policy? Does that make sense?
Yeah. We were thinking. Okay.
I don't think they caught that, Carrie. I think you got cut off in the middle of that.
No, we were, we were considering all states. Oops, Sarah, I don't think she was done. Oh, maybe not. Okay, Kirsten Moore?
Hi, Kirsten Moore, 120 South Pleasant Street. I would just urge you to consider that regardless of whether the children are vaccinated or not, listening to public radio and going on to the state's websites today, that the variants entering the state regardless of vaccination, they are requiring, well, not requiring, but suggesting that everyone follows every protocol that has been given so far to date because the numbers going up are dramatic. And we know that there are going to be people traveling all over and then putting these kids right back into school. And that's highly concerning. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kirsten. Next, Mara Gallagher?
Hi, Mara Gallagher, 12 Hershey Street. I just wanted, I saw the, the policy pop up, but I, and I read it quickly, but I, is it intended to be consistent with the state guideline that suggests within 72 hours either a P C R test or a, the Abbott Bionics or whatever it is, rapid test is acceptable?
Yes, and we're also including students to take part in the pool testing as well.
Okay, all right, I just, when I read it, it looked like it, I wasn't, it was not clear to me that that was up. But as long as it's what the state, consistent with the state and then plus that pool testing, okay. That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay. That's good. So where are people on this? Does anyone want us to make any changes as far as, oh, I see, oh, some more hands. Sarah Murphy?
Hi, Sarah Murphy, 14 Water Street. I'm a little confused about the pool testing qualification and that it assumes that someone had traveled and then would go back into the school to get the pool testing after they traveled. Or is that what you're meaning?
No, Dr. Austin had gone over.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to pool test on Friday, so that would qualify for the 72. We're asking if you take part in that, that would qualify.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Kirsten, I'm not sure if this is a new hand or it was just up from before.
No, not me.
Katie Sutton?
Okay, am I unmuted now? Yep. Okay, great. Um, I just want to clarify, so if a kid comes back from the Bahamas on Sunday or whatever, and so they can't get tested till, I guess, the three days out or whatever, they can't zoom in for those couple of days because I feel like that would be more encouraging, people do the right thing if they could zoom in at least. I know that this is really tricky, but I just, realistically, I just worry that people will just say, well, he can't miss school for three days, so we're not getting tested.
Yeah, and what I would say, Katie, we are going to talk about that with our, with our members to see the best way to handle that within the school settings. I will also say we're going to do everything we can to give multiple opportunities to have people test. So if they come back on Saturday, they come back on Sunday, there will be a test site that's available to them immediately. So we'll minimize the amount of time people are out and hopefully, you're right, to be able to encourage people to participate. So we'll certainly be talking about that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Matt Cosman?
Hey, Matt Cosman, 12 Summit Drive. So just trying to understand, clarify if this is an April vacation policy or anytime any family decides to go out of state for more than 24 hours, they need to tell the school that they're leaving. And I guess, so that's helpful. So you guys are nodding, so the answer is yes. I guess just, I'm all, I think it is really important to be safe, and I think everyone should be being safe. But frankly, this feels like a little bit of an overreach, and I'm not sure how it's enforceable. And I, I don't, I guess I just don't really understand how the, a public school can, can enforce this. So maybe you can just talk through if it, yeah, how you guys are thinking about that.
Right, so the policy, and I know, apologies, it was up and it was very small and it was hard to read, but this is voluntary. I mean, we're requesting it. It's kind of our expectation. We kind of all have to do our part if we want to. It's been a tremendous amount of work to get the kids back into school, and it's unquestionably better for everybody, but we have to keep them safe too. And that, that requires families to do their part as well. So, I mean, to your point, like, no, we can't kick a kid out of school if they, if the parents don't do it. But, but we just, that's kind of the expectation, you know, we're, we're doing everything we can on our ends, and so we're just asking families to do the same. Okay, does anyone want to make some changes to the policy? Or do you want to, just, we could schedule a quick meeting to do a second read sometime before April break?
Yeah, I think we should schedule, schedule a second meeting and, and talk about the qualifications of vaccinations or not. But I do think, you know, people should. It's risky, even people that aren't going away during April vacation, if we can reiterate that again, that you know, we, people will be out and doing things even if they're here in Hingham. So this testing at the, you know, before we come back is important for everyone to participate in. But I think we should take a little, little time just to fine tune it.
Definitely, and so everyone can read it before. So, okay, so we'll talk about that before we adjourn, just to schedule the next dates. So next is subcommittee and project reports. So, Michelle?
Thanks. I, I am going to update, CPAC held their monthly meeting last week. If folks are interested and available, the CPAC board needs a board next year. So they will need a chair or co-chairs, treasurer, I think, an event coordinator. So they're looking for members of the CPAC community who are interested in serving on the board. If you are interested, then please consider it. It's a, it is a great group of parents who are advocating and working on behalf of their students with special education needs. And it is a vitally important role to both the school committee and to the district to hear from parents. So if you're interested in serving on that board, I mean, go to the CPAC, the Hingham CPAC website and reach out to them and let them know of your interest. The, at the meeting, the CPAC decided that they would like to hold a forum for the special education community with Dr. Venice and Dr. Austin. I know they reached out to you as well. That may be something that the full school committee is interested in attending at a minimum. It'll be the special ed subcommittee will attend as a subcommittee. And I'll, when the dates get, date gets selected, I'll let everyone know in case we want to have full participation. Foster building committee, things are moving ahead. We are finalizing the O P M. So that's a big step towards that project. We had interviews last week and great firms, and we're finalizing those selections. And the high school reopening, or the high school council advisory committee has been meeting weekly and just kind of fine tuning all the details with the, all the things that need to happen at the high school level for the return on the 26th. So that work has been in, very interesting. It's been a bit challenging. We sort of have a joke that for every answer we come up with, it generates two more questions, but we're getting through them all. So thanks to everyone who is participating in that committee. It's really great work and very helpful. And that's it for me.
Thank you. And we will post for the full school committee to attend the CPAC town hall, just in case.
Okay, sure.
Jen?
I do not have anything.
Yes?
I have a couple of updates in your packet. You'll see some warrants that were signed since the last time we met. And then the Equity Task Force. I appreciate there are lots of balls in the air this year, and there's been a lot of work going on in the Equity Working Group. And we don't always update because of all of the other things going on, trying to get the kids back in and the budget. So Dr. LaBella and I spoke about him giving an update at our next committee meeting. So he's going to give a full update. And there's a lot of great work happening and coming out of that. And, you know, appreciate the feedback about things that happened in Dexbury. And it was interesting that we, we had found out about that the day before we met at our last task force. So we were able to talk about that incident and what would we do if and when that happens here. So it's, it's a great working committee. We've got great teachers involved in that process. And, you know, the last thing I'm always left with is what do we do to ensure the safety of our kids? And is there, are there things in place that the kids, if they're not feeling safe, that, that we have? If they're not feeling safe, that, that we have a mechanism to deal with that. And I think we do have things. We just need to make people aware of them. We've got the anti discrimination. We've got the anti bullying. They just have to feel comfortable going to someone and talking to them to make sure that we can address it. And we've got a civil rights officer, Dr. Jamie is our civil rights officer and he. I know that there's a couple of investigations currently in process as well. So. There are mechanisms, but, you know, appreciate that we need to probably communicate that more so that people know where they're going to need to go and. And how that needs to happen. So he's going to give an update in a couple of weeks. Just wanted to let everybody know that. And. I think that's all. I think that's all I have.
Thanks, Ms. Carlos?
Just want to report that the Plymouth River School Council will be meeting on April twelfth. And Capitol and facilities will be meeting on the thirteenth. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Libby?
So in case you didn't think that Dr. Jamie had enough balls in the air, I have just one more to talk about that's. And that's part of his responsibility and that's the website. And the. Website is in really good shape now, thanks to him. And so we're, but we're not done because we're. Looking at phase two and increasing its functionality. And we're also looking into increasing its accessibility to people with disabilities. So it's. It's a slow process, but it's still happening, which is terrific. Like even after this past year, we've managed to. Make that website a thing and we're still working on it. Thank you, Dr. Jamie. And that was my community outreach. Update, by the way. And that's it.
Thank you. Liza?
For salary negotiations, we're meeting Wednesday and Thursday with the teachers' union to. Continue talking about the memorandum of agreement for bringing students back in full time. And then April fifteenth, we're meeting with the bus drivers' union again on their collective bargaining agreement. That's it.
Thank you. Policy subcommittee met this afternoon. And in addition to the other things we talked about. We, I think we're finally ready to adopt the policy manual. So what we would like to do is bring, put it in the agenda for the twenty sixth. And so, you know, take a look now and see if there's anything, any remaining issues that you wanted to raise with it. But we would like to hopefully adopt that on that date. And then we can always revise things as we go. And I'm sure we will be doing that, but it'll be good to just get that there as our framework and. You know, a good base to move forward from. South Shore SNAP spring programs are on the website right now. They're doing a baseball program, a soccer program and a lacrosse program for South Shore students with disabilities. And the summer program registration is also on the website. Next, we have other items as may not reasonably known forty eight hours in advance of the meeting. I just wanted to mention that so town meeting is supposed to be happening on May eighth, which is a Saturday on the field. And so we are going to post a school committee meeting at one thirty P M. So I guess town meeting is supposed to happen at two. Can everyone make that? Okay. All right. So what we'll do is just what we did last year, we'll meet up on the field and call to order there so we can all attend town meeting as a body.
And Carrie, Carrie, can I just ask a quick question? I'm sorry. Are we then still planning on meeting at six thirty on April twenty sixth?
No, that'll be at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Okay, thank you.
Move that back. Does anyone else have anything for forty eight hours? No. Okay, if we could just schedule a quick meeting to go over that travel policy.
Can I propose next Monday night, Carrie, the twelfth?
The twelfth.
At six P M?
Yep. That works for me. It doesn't work for everyone?
Carlos, is that when we have our?
Yeah, we, we have a meeting at, well, no, we're meeting on the thirteenth. I'm meeting on the twelfth at Plymouth River, but that's before that time. But then on the thirteenth, you propose on Monday, the twelfth?
At six P M.
I can do that. Yep.
Does that work for everyone? Okay. All right. Let's, I will be in touch with Sherry then so we can post that. So I think we're done. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Carlos, sorry.
You know, I never like to leave, so I don't like to make that type of motion. Thank you. Have a second.
Thanks, Carlos. Okay, Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Yes?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Hi. Liza?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye.
Good night.